So, good evening, everyone. I would like to reconvene the March 23rd, 2021 meeting of the Calver County Board of Commissioners. And tonight's function is a public hearing for presentation of the fiscal '22 budget. Director Hayden, floor is yours.
Good evening, Commissioners in public. Welcome. Thank you for listening in. The next slide, please. We, at the end of our presentation, you'll be able, the public will be able to make comments. Two minutes for an individual, five minutes if you're speaking on behalf of an organization. The instructions for the dial-in public comment are on the county's website, right off the homepage. And I believe right towards the end of the presentation, before a public comment is accepted, our county attorney will walk you through joining us. Next slide. This is the purpose of tonight. We're going to present the staff recommended '22 budget to the Board of County Commissioners and the citizens of Calver County. And this will provide an opportunity for comment on the fiscal year 2022 staff recommended budget for both the Commissioners and the public. Next slide. Our agenda for this evening, we're going to start with Mark Willis, our county administrator. Then I'm Tim Hayden, Director of Finance and Budget, and I will come in after. Then Beth Richmond, our Deputy Director of Budget, will give you details on the general fund budget, followed by Mary Lehman, our Grants Coordinator. She will work some details of the grants fund budget for you. Rachel Griffith, Accountant III, will provide details of the enterprise fund budgets. She'll be focusing on two, the water and sewer and solid waste. Then Veronica Atkinson, our Capital Projects Analyst, will do a review, a short review of the highlights of our '22 six-year plan for the Capital Projects budget. The last speaker of the evening will be Dr. Curry. He'll give us some Board of Education remarks, and then we'll be open for public comment. So, up next is our county administrator, Mark Willis.
Good evening, Commissioners, citizens. Mark Willis, County Administrator. My brief is going to be actually more brief than you can imagine. I'm going to point out a few things that we've kind of been living with as we've been preparing for this budget. And I guess we can all refer back to COVID-19, that issue that's still at hand. So, you know, a couple of things that we've done. With CARES money, with Freedom Act money, what we've done is either planned for, what we've already lived through, supporting our, the commercial entities here in the county, the businesses. But we've also reached out and helped citizens as much as we can by using that funding appropriately. For example, EMS, when we needed to get more EMS out there, we've done what we've had to do to get that coverage out there. We've also, first, if we take into account the county employees themselves, think about the fact that we have really created a very robust teleworking opportunity that has seen, I would like to think, minimal if any lag in our support of the citizens. But we've also gone through those protective measures that have allowed folks to come back into the workplace when they've needed to. A simple example of that is the type of Plexiglas that, you know, our citizens may be able to see when viewing the citizens. So we take that very, that responsibility very sincere, and I think it's helped the county continue to keep working. Next slide, please. If you look at this slide, planning for the future, it says 2040, but what I would really like you to think about is just all of the master plans, whether they're comprehensive or town center master plans, or parks and rec, et cetera. You know, what we've tried to do is to continue to work. We've had to do it through using a lot of electronics, trying to get that message out there. But we, while we have slowed down, we haven't stopped providing the message. We haven't stopped trying to consider for the county's future, planning for that future. So whether it's the comp plan, the town center master plan, that's part of it. But we've even started new initiatives, which are to really look at the land preservation opportunities that we have, to look at what we have and how to make what we have look a little bit better. So when you look at refocus on the TDR rights for our citizens that may not know, that's what allows us to preserve our rural character by moving those building rights from the rural character into those other growth areas of the county. We're looking to make that a better program so that we not only preserve property, but we have smart growth. And I say smart growth because that's a refocus of what we're looking at as we go forward. Next slide, please. I'm not going to read this slide, but what this slide represents is that we didn't stop working. We worked around the clock sometimes to keep Calver County Government moving forward, whether it was paving roads, or taking care of downed trees, or repairing washed-out bridges that take us from one part of a community to another part of the community. We never stopped supporting the county citizens. If you look at this in detail, you know, we completed, or almost completed, the Twin Beach Library, for example, the design of that library. So we keep moving forward. We are not sitting around waiting for this to be over. We're going to treat this as just another obstacle that we have to get past, and we're doing so. Next slide, please. Working towards breaking ground on the county, the new county administration building. Now, what, I will tell you what's important about that building. One, we need to consolidate where county staff is working out of, and that's important for a couple of reasons. One, we need to consolidate the financial effort of having county government spread all over the place. There are cost savings in doing that. We're moving forward to having a very efficient building, which is as much as possible, a one-stop shop for citizens when they come in to do all of their plan review work, all of their finance, or their permits, if they go to the Health Department, if they go to Soil Conservation, if they go to the Treasurer's Office. That's going to be all located in one building, and that is to provide that, as the town center master plan calls for, is to provide that type of building within the historic district of Prince Frederick. So I think we're moving in a very solid direction with that. We're making great progress. And as you know, right now, we're about a week away from having the existing county administrative building empty. We have doubled up and sometimes tripled up in other areas where we have staff capability so that we can move forward on the demolition and creation of the new county administrative building in a very cost-saving and very construction-efficient manner. Just, the Prince Frederick Volunteer Fire Department is just another example of something that we had a responsibility to continue to move forward so that the services that we provide to citizens are not just there, but they're there in force. So while we were underway with the construction of the new Prince Frederick Fire Department, if you recall, that's right when COVID-19 hit, and it hit hard, and we never stopped. The folks that are out there building that fire department, they never stopped. County never stopped supporting them. And we're getting very close to being able to cut the ribbon on that thing in the very near future. So, again, to our citizens, obstacles to overcome, staff has done that. What we're going to show you right now is that 2022 budget. A lot of thought went into it. Director Hayden will be up here in a second to walk us through that, but there's so many moving parts to these budgets, it's hard to keep it on track. But I think staff does a really good job of telling the Commissioners what we can present to them. And please keep in mind, this is a staff recommended budget. So with that, I'll bring up Director Hayden to start the walkthrough.
Thank you, County Administrator Willis. The general fund will be the focus of the majority of tonight's presentation. The general fund accounts for the tax money, and that's why it's often the focus. You can see on the slide, we collect your property taxes and income taxes. Those are the primary sources of funding for the general fund. Twenty-four counties in the state of Maryland, only five or six have lower property taxes or income taxes than Calver County does. And there is a proposed property tax decrease in this budget. You can see what we use the money for. The schools are the primary recipient at 44% of the '22 budget. Public safety is a major component in the county's services, as well as funding the roads, and then all the other things that the county government does. Next. Our largest taxpayer is Dominion Cove Point. This is a graph of both actual and projected revenues that are paid by Dominion under our payment in lieu of tax agreement, or pilot. The red line is here to indicate the amounts that we are receiving today are in excess of the amounts we expect to receive in the future. Remember that this pilot started in 2018, as we move on to the next slide. This graph reports the total increase in general fund revenues from the prior year. So for example, 2017 shows a $14,546,000 increase from 2016 in total general fund revenues. These are all of the general fund revenues, primarily property and income taxes, like we covered just a short time ago. You'll see 2018 was the largest increase in the period, and that 32.5 was the first year of that Dominion pilot. In the staff recommended budget for '22, Dominion revenues decreased for the first time in this pilot period. In 2024, the pilot shifts from a fixed payment to a tax credit. We're working on pinning down exactly what that will mean in revenues. All of the years on this graph show a year-over-year increase until we get to '24. '24 will be a decrease in total revenues to the county per our projections. Things change. So in '24, less funding will be available, and I would warn you that it'll be a different environment. To summarize this slide, over the last few years, our revenues have been increasing, due in part to the commencement of the pilot. In '22, those pilot revenues are decreasing, and in '24, the pilot impact is significant enough that the total general fund revenues are decreasing. '24 is shaping up to be a difficult year. Calver County is in good shape as we navigate through the pandemic, and these are the reasons we're comfortable with the near-term forecast. Under property taxes, speaking of Dominion, in the middle bullet there, as well as Exelon, our proper, our public utilities provide a strong base to our revenues. Most of our real property is residential, so any commercial kind of downturn related to people's shopping habits, we experience less of. County doesn't get commercial income tax, county doesn't get sales taxes. So those kind of things that, if you lived in Vegas, or you were a government in Vegas, that the sales tax money just dried up, it's not an issue that we have to deal with. Under income tax, our median income is one of the highest in the country, and the quarter ended 12:31, '20 was the largest ever for the state's distribution of income tax receipts to the county. So in this current year, income tax receipts have been setting records. And all of that leads us to, I wouldn't say use aggressive estimates in our 2022 and future revenues, but we are comfortable with those amounts. So to summarize the general fund budget in three numbers, this is today, and there's work we have to do with the Commissioners. There's some, we're, we are working on items right now that will, that will further refine this budget, including staffing salary increases. They, we've been instructed that they need to be part of it, and they are, we're working on it now. So next on tonight's agenda is Beth Richmond.
Thanks, Tim. Good evening. I'm Beth Richmond, Deputy Director of Budget. Here are some notable items regarding the FY22 staff recommended budget. The first three items are currently part of the budget. As Tim mentioned, a planned tax reduction to the property tax rate from .932 to .927. It contains full funding for other post-employment benefits, and it contains $11.4 million in funding for capital projects. The last item is not in the budget, and that is $7.1 million of unfunded requests. These are from county departments, non-county agencies, and the College of Southern Maryland. The next two slides break down the general fund expenditures by expense classification and then by department. First, we have expense classification, listed from largest to smallest. The three highest categories are the Board of Education, salaries, and operating expense. The insurance line you see on the chart has many moving parts. Health insurance and workers' compensation insurance are the main cost drivers, but general liability and auto insurance are also included. Last year, we had a significant negative variance in health insurance, so we increased our projection for FY22. We're currently working with our health insurance provider to finalize these costs, and we anticipate that we'll be able to lower our estimate. In addition to health insurance, capital outlay also shows a large increase when comparing FY22 to FY21. Capital outlay will be discussed further as part of the next slide. Now we have general fund expenditures by department, again listed in descending order. This chart demonstrates the county's focus to provide funding for education and public safety. As you can see, there were some departments whose increase from the prior year exceeded 10%. I will give you some of the background on those lines. The increase in the Sheriff's Office expenditures is driven by growth in staffing, as well as capital outlay expenditures for required equipment and vehicles. For highway maintenance, there was an increase in contracted services and capital outlay. Due to aging and worn equipment, the department has items recommended for replacement this year. They have large pieces of specialized equipment, which I have no idea what half of them do, which are costly to replace. Technology services added two cybersecurity positions, as well as expanded to a 40-hour week for technical staff. We're also in the midst of consolidating certain expenses within the technology services department, such as copiers, license agreements, and hardware and software purchases. Previously, these costs were accounted for in each department. In facility, they also had items on the replacement schedule. In addition, maintenance costs have increased. The facilities department is responsible for maintaining more than 60 locations throughout the county. Over 90% of the general fund revenues comes from property and income taxes. This has been a constant back to at least 2010. Nine in 10 of the general fund dollars we are discussing tonight come from these two I've spoken in detail regarding general fund expenditures. For this graph, the biggest takeaway is that 44% of the general fund expenditures are for Calver County public schools. As you previously heard, there is a $1 million deficit in the staff recommended budget. How do we close that gap? There are two tools available to the Board. Two of the three ways to address the deficit are to decrease the expenditures and/or increase revenue. For expenditures, the Board could look at reducing the paving budget, reducing the transfer for capital projects, or, and/or reducing the transfer for land preservation. For revenue, the Board could look at raising the income tax and/or keeping the property tax rate as is instead of lowering it as planned. What are the next steps in the process? As Tim said, we're working on refining our numbers. We'll have further discussions with the Board to address this $1 million deficit. We'll also continue to make our revenue and expenditure updates. We will continue to watch bills regarding school funding move through the legislative process. Lastly, the public hearing for the Commissioners' budget will be held on May 18. In order to finalize that budget, we will need decisions from the Board by April 16. Next up, we have Mary Lehman.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Mary Lehman, Grants Coordinator in Finance and Budget, and I'm here to talk about the general fund transfers to grants. Next slide. Thank you. The FY2022 staff recommended general fund transfers to grants in Funds '24 and '25 totals $2,225,742, and that amounts to about 27% of grant revenue. You may ask yourself why the general fund provides funds to grants, and there are two reasons. The first reason, contractual obligation, comprises the majority of the general fund transfers to grants. This means it's part of an agreement between the granting agency and the county. We are obligated to be a stakeholder. This is also known as local share or match. On the slide above, you can see the largest obligations are to substance abuse and transportation. In FY2020, Transportation receives separate CARES funding that subsidizes the general fund contribution. The remainder of the general fund transfer to grants is related to granting agency budgetary constraints, sometimes called flat funded. Over time, with the Board's blessing, the general fund has stepped in to bridge some of the grant funding shortfalls. I think it's interesting to note that occasionally a grant will fall into both categories. During non-pandemic times, Transportation requires a local share and is usually flat funded. Up next, we have the enterprise funds with Rachel Griffith.
Thank you, Mary. Hi, I'm Rachel Griffith, Accountant III for the Enterprise Funds, and I'm going to present the budgets for the Water and Sewer and Solid Waste Funds. These two funds are enterprise funds, meaning they are run like a business and are expected to pay for their own operations by the fees that they charge. The Water and Sewer Fund charges capital connection fees and user fees, and the Solid Waste Funds charges tipping fees, excise taxes, and solid waste fees to their customers. Water and Sewer serves major town centers in Prince Frederick and Solomons, as well as many smaller communities throughout the county. There are 16 water systems and seven wastewater systems in the county. The Water and Sewer Fund summary budget is shown on the screen. This budget is based on the rates currently in effect. As you can see, the budget decreased by 2.26% over fiscal year '21. The increase to debt service is related to the 2020 bond sale. These are some of the highlights for the Water and Sewer Fund. Under operating, we will continue ongoing maintenance of existing infrastructure. We have replaced just under 10,000 water meters. Did you know that when a meter stops working, the water continues to flow through the meter, but it stops measuring that consumption, and therefore we cannot bill for it? So replacing aging water meters is important to the fund's revenue. Under regulations and policy, the countywide wastewater study. This study will identify the most cost-effective way to provide wastewater services to communities and/or areas that have failing sewage disposal systems, and is planned to be completed this Here are some of the capital improvement highlights for Water and Sewer Fund. We will continue to address aging infrastructure. The Chesapeake Heights and Dairs Beach Water System Upgrade, Phase 1, which was to install a new well, has been completed, and Phase 2 is expected to begin this month. We have the Cavalier Country Water System. The iron removal system has been installed. Two wells and the hydro pneumatic tank have been refurbished. Now the Solid Waste Fund. The Solid Waste Fund is used to run the county landfill at Appeal and all of the six resident convenience centers or compactor sites. The six locations of the convenience centers are Sweetwater Road in Lusby, Ball Road in St. Leonard, Stafford Road in Barstow, Two Huntington locations, Hunting Creek Road and Plum Point Road, and Push Hall Station Road in Sunderland. You can see the solid waste summary budget on the screen. The budget is decreasing by about 2.24%, or about $23,000. As you can see, the revenues and expenses have remained flat from fiscal year '21 to fiscal year '22. Here we have some highlights for the Solid Waste Fund. For operating, the solid waste fee is projected to increase by $3. This is the fee that appears on your property tax bill. The contracted tip fee will increase based on the Consumer Price Index, CPI. As we go through the budget process, a less than 1% increase will be reflected in the Commissioners' and adopted budget. The right for regulations and policy, we have the expanded palestrian EPS ban, which is styrofoam. The Department of Public Works and Health Department collaborated to inform Calver County businesses of the EPS ban in December of 2020. The Maryland General Assembly passed a law began banning the use of EPS food and drink packaging containers in Maryland, effective October 1, 2020. Food service businesses are required to provide food and drink packaging that does not contain EPS materials. And for the capital improvement program, next slide. Thank you. Let's see, in that slide. I'll continue. For the capital improvement, there it is on the bottom. Sorry. We plan to improve the traffic pattern and signage within a pure landfill and install attendant booths at two convenience centers. Now I return it over to Veronica Atkinson.
Good evening. I am Veronica Atkinson, the Capital Projects Analyst. My first slide is a quick overview of the larger capital improvement projects requested for the FY22 staff recommended budget. The first project highlighted is Beach Elementary, with an estimated total construction cost of $30.7 million. These construction costs are shared with the state of Maryland. The county's portion of the new school upon completion would be approximately 47%, or $19.8 million. This project is spread over four budget years, FY20 through FY23. The FY22 requested budget for Beach Elementary's construction is $20.2 million. The county's portion of the FY22 request is $9.5 million. The top picture on this slide is a rendering of the new Beach Elementary. Our second highlighted project falls under public facilities. The requested FY22 projected total is $12.4 million. Within this category are two of the general fund's larger projects, the new county administration building and Twin Beach's library. A rendering of the new library is pictured below Beach Elementary. Our third highlight falls under the enterprise fund. One of the largest projects requested in the FY22 CIP of $5.5 million is for the Highland's Low Pressure Sewer System. As Rachel explained, the projects that fall under the enterprise fund are paid for by the user of the utilities. This slide reflects the FY22 expenditures in the yellow column, with the revenues broken out in the gray column. The FY22 CIP is important because it is the only year that will be adopted or funded when the Board adopts the FY22 budget. FY22 is projected at $82.6 million. The FY22 debt and Pago exceeds the previously projected FY22 planning budget found in the FY21 adopted budget. This slide is a bit confusing, but this is how we measure each year CIP. The first table at the top of the page shows the FY21 six-year CIP. The table below shows the FY22 six-year CIP request. If we look back up at that top table, the FY21 six-year CIP total was $336.3 million. In the second table, the FY22 six-year requested, projection total is $373.7 million. That is a $37.3 million increase over the FY21 six-year CIP. My final slide is another measurement tool. This chart measures the county's general fund debt. The county's debt threshold of 9.5% is depicted in the red line across the top of the chart. The blue line reflects past and future debt through FY27. The requested FY22 six-year CIP debt would put the county at 7.1% by FY27, keeping us below the county's threshold. Thank you for your time this evening. I will now hand the presentation over to Dr. Curry, Superintendent of Calver County
Thank you. Dan Curry here, Calver County Schools Superintendent. Next slide. First of all, I want to say we're excited about the plans for Beach Elementary, and so glad to be able to share that little artist's rendering of what that might look like. Tonight, I'm going to point out that we are only asking for $1 more next year than the county commission gave us this year. And I want to explain a little bit about what we're going to be paying for next year. First of all, this slide, at the top line points, I want to point out that our enrollment at September 30th, which is usually what we're funded based upon, was $14,000. at September 30th, which is usually what we're funded based upon, was 14,896 students, compared to the year before at 681 students less. We know what we've been into with starting the year with all virtual, and so we lost a lot of students to homeschooling and private schooling, and we expect we will get them back. Another number I want to show you on this slide that is really important for our community, under special services, it says 22.6% of our students receive free reduced-price meals. That is a 30% increase over the previous year. We have a lot more of our families struggling with poverty. Next slide. Five years ago, we made a commitment, the Board of Education, to try to fund all of the back steps. Many of our teachers and staff were four steps back due to some challenges with revenues in Calvert County. And as of our newest contracts that are, will take us through 2324 for teachers, through 2324 for support staff, and through 2425 for administrators, we will be restoring, have caught up and restored all back steps. And that's really important, and I thank the county commissioners for helping us get that done. Next slide. We also, with our new negotiations, we were having trouble filling school psychologist positions, speech and language pathologists, social workers, audiologists, and therapists, both occupational and physical. And so our new contract calls for some new salary structures for them, so this community, as wealthy as we are, does not have to go short. We had a lot of, especially last year, we had about half of our school psychologist positions left unfilled and had to be filled by contractors. Next slide. People worry about whether we are competitive, that we can attract the best in Calvert County. This shows you that our new salary schedules, we are ranked fourth with a beginning teacher salary at $50,500 for a first-year teacher with a bachelor's degree. If you have 10 years and a master's degree, you could make nearly $70,000, and with a master's degree, a maximum at almost $100,000. We believe that's important so that we can continue to be competitive in this difficult world of attracting the best and the brightest teachers. Next. Now, our support staff are so important to us, and our new contracts call for $1.10 an hour flat increase across the board for this year, plus a step and a restored step, and the same for next year. We think that's important because we are working our way toward what we has projected, the minimum wage requirement of $15 an hour for our support staff, and they play such an important role in our success in the school district. Next. New in this budget also, along with our salary increases, are additional digital resources, additional print resources for elementary school, replacement textbooks for literature, language, math, and history, updated program materials for Project Lead the Way Engineering and Biomedical, resources for gifted and advanced learners, which haven't been, had too much invested in them in recent years, and additional manipulatives for elementary science and math. Next slide. Just to point out a few things that are coming from the state, everyone's heard about Kerwin funding. These numbers here represent money that has been coming our way for the last couple of years under Kerwin, that helps supplement salaries for staff, to help students with disabilities, for supplemental instruction, and for mental health coordination. That is sustained presently in the proposed state budget. Next slide. Also in the proposed state budget, additional Kerwin funding. The most important is the top line. The state of Maryland has recognized that all school districts have lost enrollment because of the pandemic this year. So this line represents the state's effort to level fund us and hold harmless all school districts for their loss in enrollment in anticipation of getting back to a more normal school year and more normal enrollment. It does require that every school district be funded locally, more than they did the previous year, and that's why my request to you, ask you for $1 more. Next slide. This is our final slide, and it kind of sums everything up. You can see that our state funding represents 38.6% of our budget, and the county appropriation, we are requesting rather, we are requesting just $1 more than our current year. The big kicker, though, is our planned use of fund balance. It represents $6 million more than in the previous year. Now, this is the Board of Education's way of saying we need to dip into what you might call a rainy day fund, because if ever there was a rainy day, this is it. We have lost enrollment, but we have not reduced our staff in any way. We kept all of our staff on, all of them contributed to this year's education in every category and every workplace, and we anticipate needing that staff for next year, anticipate enrollment returning. So the Board of Education has offered to dig into their savings to be able to be sure that all salaries are paid and we maintain the same staffing level as we have this year for what is anticipated a return to a regular school year in 2122. Thank you very much, and we appreciate your support. Thank you, Dr. Curry. So this will start our public comments section, and I believe we have Dr. Murphy from the College of Southern Maryland on our teams call, if she's available.
Yes, thank you, Director Hayden. And commissioners, I'm happy to be here this evening. It's been very interesting to listen to this presentation. You know, a budget is a powerful communications document of values, and we direct resources to the things that we believe are important. At the College of Southern Maryland, we understand that we must be prudent stewards of student tuition and taxpayer dollars, and we're proud that most of our money is directed toward instruction, student services, and academic support. Learning is a human-centered enterprise, consequently, the overwhelming majority of our operating dollars go to salaries and benefits, and this focus has become even sharper during the pandemic. It's clear that we value education and the people who make education happen, and our budget is a direct reflection of our institutional values. Calvert County is a partner in our operations, and it's disappointing that the recommended budget doesn't include our request for $92,939, a 2% increase of our maintenance effort. Indeed, we haven't received an increase since 2018, nor have our one-time requests been honored. Unlike county employees, our employees at the College of Southern Maryland have not received an increase since July 2019. This lack of funding has made it increasingly difficult to serve our over 4,200 credit students who attend the Prince Frederick campus. CSM has already dipped into its fund balance, the rainy day fund, to the tune of $2.8 million last year. The COVID-19 pandemic has been difficult for the college, and especially for our students. Their families have lost jobs, they've had illness, they've had unbelievable food insecurity, and we've tried our best to meet their needs. And our request this year of Calvert County mirrors our requests of Charles and St. Mary's County. In addition to the very modest increase to our base, we're asking for a one-time contribution, not for the college, but for the students of Calvert County in the form of Calvert County Commissioners Care Scholarships. As I said, our students have been really hit hard in this pandemic, and the additional $225,000 allocation we're requesting will provide scholarships for one class for approximately 447 Calvert County students. During these really difficult times, the education CSM provides is necessary for citizens in our region to recover economically and to thrive. As Director Hayden pointed out, Calvert County is in a good fiscal place right now, and the county is among the most affluent in the country. It's difficult for me to hear a budget presentation, as I heard this evening, that hasn't recognized college students who are the future of this county. So I ask with facts in mind and an eye towards the struggling college students of Calvert County, I ask that the Calvert County Board of County Commissioners amend the staff recommended budget to support the value that the College of Southern Maryland brings to Calvert County and its residents. I thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. John Norris, County Attorney. As with every meeting, we confirm that the telephone number that's been published with the agenda is working. We've checked it twice tonight. At 7:38, there are eight people on hold, so I'm going to speak to those eight people that have called in to listen tonight. The floor has been open for public comment. If you wish to speak, please press star nine, and please be patient until it's your turn to speak. Speakers will be identified by the last four digits of the phone number you're using to call in, and unmuted one at a time. You'll be asked to state your name and address. You'll be asked to say whether you are providing comments as an individual, where you will be allocated two minutes, or if you're designated representative of a group, you'll be allocated five minutes. Again, if you are here to, on the call to speak at this public hearing, please press star nine. And earlier, the delay was maybe two seconds when we tested at 7:06, so I think anybody that wanted to speak will have the opportunity to now have spoken. Is there anybody that has raised their hand?
Yes, we have a few speakers. Caller 1139, we are ready to receive, to receive your comments. Please state your name and address, and whether you are speaking as an individual or as a designated representative of a group.
Yes, my name is Greg Pierce. I'm the Executive Director of Jefferson Patterson Parking Museum. Thank you for providing the opportunity to speak this evening. Included in this budget and your non-county agency budget there runs for our park, so I wanted to thank Calvert County and the Board of Commissioners for your continued support of our institution. This past year has impacted everyone, including JPPM, and we're really proud to have been able to keep our grounds open for the entirety of the pandemic and to be able to continue providing virtual and limited in-person programming, and this is in no small part due to the funding that we receive from Calvert County. Our annual park visitation is over 100,000 people a year. Our visitation increased this year, even though our buildings are closed, even though a lot of our programming was scaled down, we still saw an increase in visitation as people were looking just simply to get outside, outdoor safe spaces so they could record in. Additionally, we had an unprecedented number of individuals participating and engaging in our online virtual programming, which we've worked on to try and supplement the losses on our in-person program. And most of the visitors who attended and who benefited from this programming come from right here in Calvert County. Your Calvert County funding supports our educational programming, including our Chess Packs and Rural Life and our Children's Day on the Farm event. Chess Packs and Rural Life were developed in conjunction with Calvert County Public Schools, and in fact, right now, we're working on revamping some of those programs to make them more relevant today. This partnership currently sees every fourth and sixth grader in the county visit JPPM, although that will change in the future, I think it'll be fourth and eighth graders moving forward, and they come to our park for hands-on, natural, social-science-based instruction. On an annual basis, we see over 3,000 students. This year, we were convert, obviously, we didn't see 3,000 students this year, but we were able to convert a lot of this program into a virtual format so that it could still be used as students were learning remotely, so it stayed relevant for them even as they were unable to be in the classrooms physically. So your funding allowed us to maintain and improve these programs each year, and ultimately allows us to positively impact the lives of thousands of Calvert County's schoolchildren and age. Calvert County also has been a longtime supporter of our Children's Day on the Farm event. Children's Day on the Farm is a free public event dedicated to highlighting the rich agricultural tradition of Southern Maryland. It's been held annually for over 30 years, and Children's Day on the Farm hosts performances, demonstrations, activities, individuals for all ages, with an annual attendance of between 3,000 and 4,000 people. Every year, staff speak with people who have attended as a child and now bring their family to the event. So Calvert County funding allows us to put on this free public activity. So again, I want to thank Calvert County Government and the Board of Commissioners for your continued support. I'll end by saying that our ability to develop and put on the program and the generation of individuals from this county have enjoyed and continue to value comes in no small part from your assistance, so thank you again.
Thank you. If we could have the next caller, please.
Yes, good evening. This is Carolyn Moller, 1550 Clay Hammond Road, Prince Frederick, and I representing the Calvert County Historical Society. As President of the Board of the Historical Society, I want to thank the Commissioners for your continual financial support for the Calvert County budget. Our mission is to collect, preserve, research, and share the history of Calvert County, and your support has been and is still essential to the Calvert County Historical Society in enabling us to meet our goals. We thank you very much.
Thank you very much. If we could have the next caller, please.
Caller with number ending in 9660.
Good afternoon. Rhonda Thomas, representing Leap Forward. I'm happy to report that Leap Forward is celebrating 20 years in 2021 this year, 20 years of providing educational services to our youth, and we'd like to thank the Board of Commissioners for your support, and we hope that you will continue to support us as we reach out to underserved youth here in the Southern Maryland area. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. If we could have the next caller, please.
It appears there are no additional callers that wish to speak.
Mr. President, with no additional callers, it's up to the board's discretion. The staff has recommended, go ahead.
Thank you, County Attorney, Mr. Norris. So to stay on schedule and get the final changes that we're going to need from the board by April 16th, there are only two more meetings before that date. So we'll be back pretty quick. Staff requests a motion to open the record for the fiscal year 2022 staff recommended budget, and then leave it open until Tuesday, April 13th, 2021, close of business.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Move to adopt the recommendation by the director to open the record and leave it open for the specific time.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second to open the record until April the 13th. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes 5-0. So I believe that concludes this budget hearing tonight. I just want to thank for those that called in, and I want to thank for those that have been listening in. As you, I hope you understand, the budget process is a long process. We began this back in the fall, and tonight is just the first glimpse of the staff recommended budget. There's still time to make adjustments, and we won't finalize this budget until June, but you have until April 13th to make comments, and we would appreciate those comments. So once again, appreciate everybody's patience. We certainly wish we could meet under different circumstances, but COVID doesn't allow that. So next year, hopefully, we'll be back in our normal format, and I can assure you, we all look forward to that. So please get your comments in and make those known, and I guess the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to approve.
Mr. President, move to adjourn.
So I have a motion and a second to adjourn. Discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The motion carries 5-0.